I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Goham.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File of the Council Number 9, 2018, and ordinance amending file of the Council Number 12, 1996, as amended, entitled, "The City of Scranton Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance to amend the approval process for lot line adjustments, annexations, and minor revisions of approved plans."
There are no speakers on the sign-in sheet. Is there anyone who would like to address this issue? Just one comment I want to make. The Lackawanna County Planning Commission did send a memo over that they have no concerns or objections to the Saldo amendment. If there's no further business, motion to adjourn. Adjourn. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Goham.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
I would like to make a motion to take from the table, file of the Council Number 9, 2018.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, this ordinance pertains to amendments to the subdivision and land development ordinance to amend the approval process for lot line adjustments. This ordinance will be placed in seventh order for a final vote. Anyone who wishes to speak on this particular piece of legislation may do so during fourth order citizens' participation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so move. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, Agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting to be held May 9, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I just have one announcement. On Tuesday, May 15th, Lodge Number 2 of the Fraternal Order Police and the Scranton Police Department will be conducting their annual police memorial ceremony in front of Scranton Police Station. The headquarters is located at 100 South Washington Avenue, and the ceremony will begin at noon. They'll be honoring a Scranton police officer who made the ultimate sacrifice of having been killed in the line of duty. All that can attend, please do. Thank you.
I also have one. The legal women voters of Lackawanna County and the Political Science Department of the University of Scranton plan to hold a candidate debate for the Democratic primary for PA Representative to the 112th District. That debate is scheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, May 1st, at 7:00 PM at the Moskowitz Theater, 4th floor of the DeNaples Center at the University of Scranton. The legal and the Political Science Department will also hold a debate for the Republican primary for the US, 8th US Congressional District. That debate is scheduled for this Thursday, May 3rd, at 7:00 PM at the Moskowitz Theater, 4th floor of the DeNaples Center. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Rich Bradshaw.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having us. I'm Rich Bradshaw. I'm the executive director at Ronald McDonald House in Scranton, and this is Bridgette Slagan. She's our family room coordinator, which brings the Ronald McDonald House, the beauty of it, inside of the hospital, so everybody in our local community can experience a Ronald McDonald House right in the hospital. So you can go out of your family's, your child's bedroom and go right into a home inside the hospital. So we're here today to share something fun with you. Let's have some fun today, right? So, uh, we have some exciting news. As you know, the Armed Forces Parade is going to be on May 19th, and we've been doing this since the 90s, and this year, we got together and really kind of just amped it up. And so we brought our Show Your Stripes 5K Race and Fun Walk down to this to bring the participation up. And it's a very family-friendly event. We usually get over 1,000 folks to that, plus they bring their kids and everything. We have a great time. Bounce houses, glitter tattoos, everything. But the whole idea is to bring everybody out to support our Armed Forces. So we were hoping that we could share that with you guys a little bit. What you normally see for the parade, which is a few vehicles and several bands, has now grown to 30 vehicles, and they're doing a whole bunch of displays coming down from Toba Hanna, and it's a collaborative effort to come together and show our stripes for our Armed Forces, you know? And I'm pleased to hear that you guys made the announcement earlier, too, to support our veterans and so forth. And that's what this is really all about. Showing your stripes for Ronald McDonald House, those stripes that you see have always represented service in our community. So we're bringing that down, and it represents service and sacrifice of a community coming together to make these things possible. So we wanted to share that with you folks. We appreciate that time. We're asking everybody to come out on May 19th and just do something special together as a community. Honor our Armed Forces who defend us. Come together for a great cause, and at the same time, enjoy a beautiful day of events. It really is going to be fantastic. Bigger and better than ever, and the start of something beautiful.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gerard Hetman.
Good evening, Council. Gerard Hetman from the Lackawanna County Commissioner's Office. First, it's a pleasure to follow Rich and Bridgette here at the podium. The three of us serve on the Armed Forces Week Planning Committee. It's one of my favorite duties and something I'm honored to do. To follow that, of course, the parade is coming up on Saturday, May 19th. Steps off at 11:00 AM from the Geno Merly Center on Penn Avenue in downtown Scranton. And as Rich said, we've got a lot of different things planned that day. The parade has always been a great experience, but this year, it's going to be bigger and better than ever, particularly, Rich talked a little bit about the events before the parade starts, but at the end of the parade route, on Courthouse Square, during, and then after the parade concludes, we're going to have a variety of different military vehicles, displays. Many of them are hands-on and interactive that kids of all ages, and of course, anyone who comes out can come up to really look at and enjoy. Many of those come from Toby Hanna Army Depot. Some of them are historic in nature, a couple helicopters and former aircraft and systems that were used in eras past in the military. Many of them, of course, are current, and some of them are displays and hands-on exhibits of the equipment and technology that Toby Hanna makes every day, that goes out into the field to give our forces, you know, that edge that they need when they protect and serve around the world. So come out, again, the parade at 11:00 AM, but before, we'll have the race, and then after, we'll have all the displays and all the fun on Courthouse Square. It's going to be really nifty. If you get a chance, it's going to be a great day. So please join us for that. But before the day of the parade, we're going to have the return of the Armed Forces Week Luncheon. For those of you that have attended in the past, I remember going to that back in the early 2000s, and it was a smash hit every year. Hundreds of folks would come out to pay tribute to the military. Enjoy a great lunch, and also hear a great speaker. Normally, uniformed military officer of a high rank would come out and address the community about the need to pay tribute and the current state of military affairs around the world. We'll see that again this year on Thursday, May 17th. The luncheon starts at 11:00 AM, concludes about 1:00 PM at the Hilton Scranton Conference Center. It is open to the public. Anyone who would like to attend can certainly purchase a ticket. They're $20 per person. You just have to RSVP for the dinner by calling 570-615-2018 by Monday, May 14th. So we hope to see you at the Armed Forces Luncheon back this year and getting better than ever, we hope. Second, an item that we've had a lot of questions on in recent weeks since our press conference back when it was still pretty cold out. The Lackawanna County Heritage Fair is an event that's, of course, planned the inaugural version for next year, but we've had lots of folks contact us at the Commissioner's Office asking how they can have volunteer opportunities, sponsorship opportunities, vendor opportunities, just general inquiries of all different natures we've had regarding the inaugural Heritage Fair. Anyone who's interested, I can contact my coworker, Rick Notari, at 570-963-6838, or by emailing NOTARI, R, that's N-O-T-A-R-I-R, at lackawannacounty.org for more information. The process is still in the very early stages, so we don't have anything else to announce at this time with the fair, but we're happy to take any inquiries, and as soon as we get the appropriate processes up and running, we'll be happy to get those folks the information that they're looking for. Third, the Lackawanna County Parks and Recreation Spring Fishing Derby takes place on Saturday, May 5th. It's 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM for ages 4 through 8, and then 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, ages 9 through 12. The registration cost is $5, and spinners are prohibited during the fishing. They ask you to register in advance by calling 570-963-6764. Also, Lackawanna County 4H will hold their informational meeting at the marketplace at Steamtown on Thursday, May 10th, 4:30 PM to 5:30 PM. Of course, 4H is open to all children ages 5 through 18, and adult volunteers are also welcome after passing background checks and the required screening process. For more information, contact Sandy Graham at 570-963-6842, or at SAA224@psu.edu. And again, this is part of the relaunch, the rebirth of 4H in Lackawanna County, expanding programming, reaching out to new audiences, and this is just a general revitalization in the program that we haven't seen before. So stay tuned for more from 4H. We'll be happy to share that as they get more programs and different things off the ground. And last but not least, the Lackawanna County Parks and Recreation Department is still seeking lifeguards for the 2018 swimming season. Lifeguards must have their current life-saving and CPR certifications from the American Red Cross. Lifeguards are responsible for obtaining and funding that training on their own. They do have to have it at the start of employment. Anyone interested can contact the Parks and Recreation Office at 570-963-6764. And we see a need for that every year with lifeguards. It's a summer job that's not maybe as popular as it was in years past, especially now that we've got the four parks with swimming available. We have more of a need than there has been in the past. So, great opportunity for anyone looking for summer work. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ron Elman.
Good day, good evening, Council. Well...
I'm just enjoying your shirt.
Brother Evans and brother Rogan, you two are in the real estate business. You need higher taxes to make houses look better for loans, and that's it.
It's actually just the opposite.
The rest of us, we don't need higher taxes. That 2 to 1 vote ought to show that. You two remind me of a used car salesman working a pencil, trying to explain the good in higher taxes, and there isn't any. You're like saying this house was owned by a little old lady that only used the bathroom once a week or something. The higher taxes are just going to result in a fewer abandonments, like I got them all around, just in a circle where I walk the dog, empty houses now. Foreclosures, people leaving the apartments. On the corner of Marvin is a big house that had four apartments. It's empty. The man lives in New Jersey. Last summer, he said he just couldn't collect rents. He didn't know what to do with it. Now I see it's empty. The apartments right on Parker and Main are all empty. And you keep giving people grants and loans and forgiving loans to build more apartments. I don't, where you go get these people? Everybody doesn't have the income. Look what's happened to the people on Dixon. This morning, when I went to Western Park, a lady was telling me her electric stove went out. This was a catastrophe for her. She said she had to borrow one of those little two-pot burners. She said, "I just don't know how I'm gonna, you know, get another stove." I said, "Well, get a used one, you know, you don't have to get a new one." But these things happen, and you don't take it into consideration. All you take into consideration is more taxes to cover up the incompetence of the mayor. You five gentlemen don't need the mayor. You're a legislative body, for crying out loud. You could make the laws without him, send it to him. If he don't like it, he can veto it. But you don't, all we do is hear about things getting passed up and back and up and back. You don't need to do that. When people stand here and ask something, it should be answered reasonably. And I'd like to, I'd like to mention real quick about this, this INAP School Board. How in the world can we owe $40 million and still borrow 16 million more? When is it going to end? How in the world are we going to pay all this money between the city and unfinished business? The sewer authority business is not finished? And actually, your parking authority isn't finished. They can leave whenever they feel like it, years from now. Leave us with all this money that's old. You know, 10,000 children, real quick, do not require 850 instructors. And then we have a product we're third from the bottom. You people, third from the bottom with all those instructors. You know, if you made a class with 40 children in it, just think, 40 children into 10,000, what do you have? Quick, you got computers. Forty, you'd save about $30 million a year. If you had half that many, you'd save $22 million figuring $50,000 salaries. We could get along with half the teachers and save money. That's why...
Thank you, Ms. Elman.
I just don't see what could be done except the state coming in here to save the city from all the incompetence that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. And a lot of your comments had to do with the school board, so definitely encourage you to attend a school board meeting and address those to the school directors. Our next speaker is Joan Hodowanitz.
You got to be careful or I'll put a hex on you.
Joan Hodowanitz, city resident and taxpayer. I'd like to comment on the tragic fire that occurred recently in West Side where two, perhaps three people, lost their lives. Apparently, it started with the police trying to serve a protection from abuse order, and obviously ended tragically. But I was impressed by the way the police, the firefighters, and eventually DPW handled the situation. By the grace of God, no city employee was injured or killed in that event. It's unfortunate that people did die. So as we look forward to this May 15th police memorial ceremony, perhaps people will keep that in mind because the police, the firefighters, and even DPW, you know, they put themselves on the line for our citizens every day, and whether you think taxes are a problem, and I do, whether you think, you know, that better decisions could have been made in the past, and I do, you have to appreciate the service that those people provide. It was very dangerous. Obviously, they were dealing with an individual who was bent on killing and creating havoc, and they managed to handle well. I watched the footage on the TV at night, and it was appalling to see that building going up in flames. And very, you know, very promptly, DPW got in there to start pulling it down to try to see if they could find the third person who was missing. So, people listening, you know, think about that, and if you have nothing to do on May 15th, go down and attend that ceremony and show your respect for the people that serve us every day. You know, let's not wait until we have another casualty among our employees. Let's thank them for the job they do. Okay, having said that, is there any movement on the Arcatax study?
Well, the issue right now is, I don't know if I mentioned it last week, they have to get the digitation of all the vacant parcels and the empty land parcels, so that's in process. So I think that once that happens, it's going to happen quickly.
Do you think we might get it back before the August recess?
That's possible, yeah.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
Okay. And the March Controllers Report, where I pointed out that Noel's Insurance Company received a check for $775,510 when the original contract for their services for insurance was $701,116. Will you ever find out why, what that extra $74,000 covered? Was that their finder's fee or...?
It's not a fee. I did check on that to see if Noel's was being paid anything outside of the contract, and, you know, the documentation that came back was that it was not. We could look into it a little bit further, but my guess is just change orders through, you know, as property comes on and comes off.
Okay. It's not, it's, we can't account for it by the Serene Center, can we? Because we don't own that.
We may be, I know we're probably, a lot of the equipment in there is being insured by the city.
Okay.
So, we will check on that.
Yeah, but I was curious, because that was like a 10%, 11% jump from the previous year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Bowles.
Evening, Council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. And see tonight, you know, what puzzles me with this, this is like a taxation without representation. We pay taxes every day to dispose of our garbage. Can anyone here tell me what we get on our recycling? We're all recycling. It goes out to the recycling center. How much do we get credit for our recycled goods? Anybody get any idea of that? Okay, we need to look into that for the simplicity of whatever we get for recycling should be deducted for what we deliver our waste for, or go toward our waste cost, number one, which could drastically reduce it. Because everybody's recycling, you're cutting your garbage intake by at least 50%. So, we need to go there and look at that before we pass legislation like this and get the full picture of what we're doing here. We've been getting hammered by the school board. We've been getting hammered everywhere else because nobody wants to cut a cost or look for a savings in this city. We only look at how do we take it out of our pocket. It's time we put it back in our pockets and make people accountable for what they're doing here. You know, I sat here, not sat, I stood the other night in the rain with the nurses. If anybody's against the union, this guy is, okay? I didn't see anybody else there, yet during the campaigns, everybody was asking for their votes. Come out, do this, we'll do this, and we'll do that. But I didn't see him standing in the rain the other day. I went there to support nurses. You know why? Because when I was in a hospital, my call was, "Nurse, I need a nurse." Not a teacher to come take care of me, who gets all the benefits. I called for a nurse, and each and every one of us have, with our children or whatever. But where was our respect for them? To tell these companies, "You respect our nurses," because if you don't respect them and hire the best, guess what? We're not going to get the best. And in there, it's a life and death situation. At the school board, everybody's supporting this, supporting that, and giving them this, giving them that, but they're not in a life and death situation. They go home. Nurses work all night long, different shifts. You don't hear them call in and say, "Jesus, no, and I'm taking the day off." And it's wrong. We need to support these people because they're the lifeblood. They're your lifeline to staying alive. So the next time, come out in the rain, come out and support the people that really mean something, and do something. And the reason I was there was out of respect to my mother, who was a nurse at Mercy for almost 30 years. Her children came first, her patients came second, and that's what you have out there. So, I fault all you for not showing up there because they're important. We have to put the teachers and people back in place. Let them go. Let's put the money where it belongs. Make people accountable. You know, last week, I brought up about containers. Amel, I believe I sent you that over to review? Okay, well, Mr. President, you can talk to them about it.
Attorney Menora, we'll discuss after the meeting that legislation as well, so...
If you would. I don't want to see us in more problems than we already have in the city, especially in litigation costs. We've got enough lawyers in the city we've made pretty rich. I know I have. I was told by the AG's office, because as you all are aware, I sent a letter requesting an investigation into Mr. Mulligan. I know, Mr. Goham, I asked you to do it, and I know it wasn't done, but I took care of it, and I did it. But as you can see, the AG's kicked it back to the sewer authority. Now it's back in our court. It's back in your court. Now let's see something is done about justice and fairness, okay? What was done was wrong. Let them defend it in a court of law, not sit here saying, "Oh, what I did was right," or "They said this, they said that." You took money from us. We went through it. I know exactly what goes on. So, let's do what's right for the people. If he took the money wrongly, then he owes it back. That's money back in our pocket. It goes to our fire, our police, our people who were out on the front lines the other night at the fire, or the potentially getting killed. And that's where we need to put our services. That's where we need to put, that's what this is all about. It's our people, all of us, including yourselves, because you fall into our people as well. You live here, you pay taxes, your children are growing up here. So everything you do or don't do affects the future, because the past is gone. So when we start doing things, we need to pay attention to what we're doing. I like what the President did the other night. He put people in their place because it's about truth. And unfortunately, Mr. Goham, I still have the same problem. A lie's a lie. It doesn't go away. You're a public official, and again, I'm still requesting your resignation.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
I know the Times respects you and everything else. You're your poster boy, but that's not about truth. This is about truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. Tonight, I'd like to know what happened. Two weeks ago, we were told the trash bills had either been mailed that day or the next day. Last week, we were told they'll be mailed this week, and guess what? It's Monday, and we still don't have it. Either somebody needs to call the Postal Service or somebody else, but we're not being told the truth. On a good note, I had an occasion to go down Spruce Street today, and the Courthouse Square is absolutely beautiful. I would encourage anybody, there's not a lot to do downtown unless you live here, but it's worth a trip down during the daylight. I'm not sure if they're cherry trees or apple trees or what kind, but they're in full bloom, and it's gorgeous. Moving on to business. Reading from the minutes of the 12/7/17 City Council meeting. Mr. Rogan. Yes, just a couple of brief items. We did discuss this a little bit in our caucus. City Council, our attorney, Attorney Menora, has received the double pension scandal report from the state police, so council members will be asked to, there is going to be some documentation we have to sign before reviewing it, but we do have that report, and it's something I'm very anxious to read. And over the next couple of weeks, between the end of this session and swearing in next year, I'll be thoroughly examining that report, my emphasis. Again, we will be bound by certain legal restrictions on what we can say. For instance, there was a say, there was, say, a member of the pension board who was interviewed by the state police multiple times. We couldn't mention that person's name. We couldn't mention anything within that report, naming names, anything of that nature. But what we can do is use that information to try and put reforms in place that will prevent this from happening again. We haven't seen, as I mentioned, we haven't seen it yet. I have my suspicions on how this transpired, who the people who have been... have been committed possibly crimes, that unfortunately, because statute of limitations, they cannot be addressed as crimes, but it's our obligation to make sure that this doesn't happen again. So reviewing those reports are something that I will work on diligently over the next month or so. Fast forward, we're within about five months. I asked earlier in the year, and you said you hadn't had time, but there have been weeks when there's not been any City Council meetings, so I would think you could have gotten together. When are we going to find out if any reforms are needed in the, with respect to preventing anything, not double pensions, I wouldn't think would happen again, but there are other things?
There will be legislation coming as a result from that report. We're working on that with our attorney. As far as the lack of comment by myself and others, because of signing those non-disclosures, it's very limited what we could talk about.
You're the one who said you were gonna bring these reforms, though. It's five months.
And I just told you, we're working on the legislation.
And when, when, next week?
It takes a long time to write good legislation.
Oh, yeah. You have a terribly tough jobs, I know. Okay. Something else that's coming up is the first anniversary of the exit plan. I would like to request that before you go on your August recess, P E L, be invited here to review that. Tell us what has transpired, which things have been accomplished, which haven't, and which of those who have, that have not been accomplished as yet, the likelihood that they will within the next two years, and what new things have popped up that could change the exit plan. For instance, four new bridges in the city, 5% of that's gonna be many millions of dollars, even at 5%. So, I would like to ask that you invite them to come in before you go on, maybe on the first anniversary of their issuance, which would be, I believe, next month. Next, I really used to love the rain, as I've told you before. Now I see the rain and I feel guilty, because I know what's happening in the backyard, in the backyard, in the 1700 block of Wyoming Avenue. I know what's happening over in North Kaiser. When are we going to hear something? Three years. Both of them were here within the last two weeks. I would wish somebody could update us on what's being done for these citizens and taxpayers. We know what's being done for the nonprofits. They get it like that. Taxpayers, get in line, the back of the line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident. Mulberry Street. Perhaps Wayne would know. He's a treasure trove of information on that. The block that Goodfellas Pizza, what's the number?
Where, on Luzern Street, you mean? Or Mulberry Street?
Mulberry.
That's probably 14, 1500 blocks.
Okay. And I've been told this before, that that's a state route.
Yes, it is.
Correct. But it's a rotten shame of what's been done to it. And we really have to step on the gas with, something has to be done. I mean, some of those potholes are three feet, three inches deep. And it's all crummy repairs from utility companies. It's a shame, because it was just paved not long ago.
Yeah, right.
And it's horrible. It's just totally horrible. And it's also an ambulance route up to Guy Singers, so. I was just over there, I stopped over at C K Auto to pick up a little spray can of oil or something, you know, but that is sad. Alrighty. Now, six C has turned into seven C. Has any amendments been done to that since last week? First of all, 48 hours isn't a really good idea for, even for fines. It's like people have lives.
That legislation is actually most likely going to be tabled. There will be a vote to table it.
There won't be a vote. You just stole all my thunder, Pat. You know, now I'm gonna give you a little speech here about it. What I want is some representation and not leadership. We got a young guy comes in here, and he bails the council that, oh, you're leadership this and leadership that. Well, I don't want leadership. I just want representation of my interests. And before anybody, and I would blame the neighborhoods for this, before you dig up old grudges and use things like quality of life ordinances and so forth to get even with somebody that you think slighted you years ago, or you're not happy with the amount of repairs they can possibly afford on their house, and they can't make it look like a Taj Mahal, then think about it, because I have a situation next door, and it's legal, but, you know, just to get people paying the price that's being asked to rent that house. They're coming in from out of town, and they think we bad, you know? Knock over things, park in your driveway, get mad at you, point surveillance cameras at your front porch. What does the two old geezers have to do with, you know, what do we need a camera for? I'm not a hitman or a second-story man. I left a note to that order, you know? But it's really kinda sad. They stomped all over the lady years ago, and she just walked away from the house. And then, the way to one party was talking like she should be arrested for walking away from the house and leaving it go to the tax claim bureau. That's the way it is. It's the legal way to do it. I mean, she wasn't trying to stop anybody from coming in and taking it, but she just said, hey, this is, so, try and be kind to your neighbors, is my message out there in TV land. And hopefully, we'll have a kinder, gentler ordinance with, we can prod people to do it, like with the trash cans and stuff like that, the recycling cans. I never liked recycling cans being used for garbage. You know, some people got 10 of them, and they're back there being used for garbage all the time. That's city money, you know? And we're naturally not getting grants and so forth for recycling if it's being tossed in the garbage anyway, you know? So, they're actually taken both ways. But thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Fifth order, five-day motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
Just a few quick, quick comments tonight. First, I want to thank Richard and Bridget from the Ronald McDonald House for coming and just explaining the upgrades that they want to do and continual support for the Armed Forces Parade. It's something that's very important to our community and obviously to all the veterans and Armed Forces in our area and around the country. And also, I've known Rich for quite some time, probably since the mid-'90s, and his work with the Ronald McDonald House in this area has been, to say the least, overwhelming and extensive, the great things that he does for the families in this area. So, anytime his name's on board with something, you can guarantee he's into it, and I fully support him and for his push behind our Armed Forces Parade. So, thank you for that, Rich, and everybody from the Ronald McDonald House. Ms. Honeaway, you touched on this earlier. I just want to bring it up briefly about the Saturday incident on Washburn Avenue. Loss of life is always very tragic, always. But, you know, it's times like this where, you know, and it's been said by me and many others that we have some of the best police, fire, and DPW workers in the country, and I truly believe that. And let's just let this be just another reminder that these civil servants, they go out every day, ready to give up their life for a stranger. And that's what they do. And, you know, take your time and thank them. When you see them, they're out there for you guys, whether you know it or not, whether they know you or not. They'll gladly exchange them for you, because that's what they do. That's how they're made. So again, I want to thank them and commend them on just being the utmost professionals. And finally, I wasn't gonna touch on it, but I will. Mr. Bowles, you brought something about the nurses' support. No one has any more support for nurses than I do. Like you, my mother was a nurse. She started off in Carbonell St. Jones for a couple of years, and then supported, you know, Catholic Irish family. There was a lot of us. And she put us all through school, kept dinners on our table, kept clothes in our drawers, and kept them clean. And she worked any shift available, depending on how old we were, whether it was first shift, second shift, she worked overnights, depending, you know, however that check had to come in, she made sure. And it didn't matter. If it was a snowstorm, they had police or firemen escort to get to hospitals. Hospitals don't close. Nurses don't call off. There is no bigger supporter of a nurse than I am. Anytime any kind of support is asked of me, I'm glad to give it. Although I wasn't able to make it for them, let that not deter anyone from thinking that nurses are not the backbone of the health community, because they are. And anybody who doesn't believe it hasn't spent a day, one day in a hospital. And I believe, for the most part, unless you're born in a barn, you've at least spent a day in the hospital. And nurses are, without a doubt, the backbone of that whole establishment. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Donahue, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes. I would also first like to commend the police and fire departments and DPW on their professionalism in dealing with the tragic situation in West Granton on Saturday. We are all extremely grateful for their service to the city. I would also like to extend my support and gratitude to the nurses of Moses Taylor and Regional Hospital for standing up and demanding quality patient care in our area. I unfortunately had a scheduling conflict, and I wasn't able to attend on Wednesday. But the issue that the nurses brought up, brought to light, especially in regards to staffing, is the perfect example to show when for-profit healthcare providers have a choice between profits and quality care, they will most likely choose profits, which is basically saying the almighty dollar is more important than a life. Quality healthcare should be a right for all Americans, and nurses from both hospitals deserve our gratitude for standing up for that right. And lastly, I would also like to bring up, Council has received numerous complaints regarding a condemned building at 2004 Luzern Street, specifically regarding trash accumulated in the yard, as well as the building potentially being a fire hazard. The neighbors have been in touch with Mr. Hinton regarding their concerns. Ms. Reed, would you be able to please send a letter to Mr. Hinton to request an update on the property, and also to see whether or not the building is currently on the demolition list? And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Mr. Evans, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a few. I may regret this, but I'm gonna delve into the $30 dog license fee that was discussed over the last couple of weeks. The city developed a contribution policy for the Griffin Pond Animal Shelter. Per animal brought to the shelter by the city's animal control officer, as well as Scranton residents. So, at a defined rate of $85 per animal, using a recent contribution in 2015 as a guide, the city donated to Griffin Pond $87,000 that year, and ongoing after that. So, using a four-year average of over 4,000 animals brought to the shelter annually, approximately 35% to 40% of those are from Scranton residents or brought from the animal control officer. The dog license fee for the city is $30 and generates about $37,000 annually. That money is used to defray the cost of our contribution to the shelter, as well as donate additional funds to street cats and dogs at Neyad Park. It would clearly appear that a substantial amount of the funding for GPAS must come out of the general budget and not from the pet or dog license fee. I'm not saying I think the fee is appropriate and should not be lower, because it should be. I'm just trying to give context to the reason for the fee in the first place and why it is at that rate at the current time. But I will say, donating our fair share to the shelter is the right thing to do. To my knowledge, not one, there's only one other municipality in Lackawanna County that contributes to the Griffin Pond Shelter. The county does not contribute. With that said, most years, less than 1,000 animals are licensed in the city, far less than I think currently exist. That tells me there's a compliance issue, which should come as no surprise to anybody who's listened to my comments over the last few years when it comes to fees within the city. We continually have asked less to pay more, but by creating a system that drives more compliance, we should be able to have more licenses registered, and we'd all be able to pay less than we're paying right now. For example, the county last year issued 8,500 dog licenses. And I'm sure that their compliance rate is probably somewhere around 50%. But I don't doubt that in the city of Scranton, there's probably 6,000 more dogs than we're licensing. And if we were at a better handle on compliance, that would mean an additional revenue of $180,000 a year. With that level, the fee could easily be cut in half and still maintain the current level of funding to the Griffin Pond Animal Shelter, as well as street dogs and cats. It's also been noted the county fee is only $5, but the reality is the fee is actually $8.50 per dog, $6.50 if the dog is sprayed, spayed, or neutered. It's my understanding, though, that that amount is set by the state, by the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture, Bureau of Dog License Enforcement. The county is basically a pass crew for this program and receives a nominal fee of $1 per license. So it would appear that there should be a state remedy to this as well, possibly creating a fund through licensing that can support local animal shelters. In the meantime, it's not unreasonable for the county and other municipalities to support Griffin Pond Animal Shelter. This could help the city reduce our contribution and, again, allow for lowering license fees for city residents. Let's also remember that the city has an employee who is an animal control officer, a very valuable position in our community. All the other boroughs and towns in the county have their enforcement done by the state through a state dog warden. Scranton also deems, seems to take the rap quite a bit when it comes to issues like this. But just like the state police, which covers rural areas throughout Pennsylvania, Scranton taxpayers are paying for a service provided by the state to others that they have no benefit from. So there you go. It's everything you want to know about dog licensing, and we're afraid to ask. But it's certainly a lot more complicated than most probably thought, but that does not mean we can't do better. Most communities need to step up and contribute to the local shelter, and the city has to do a much, much better job ensuring compliance. And then we can reduce the fee to a more reasonable amount. It's still pretty simple in my eyes. When more pay, we all pay less. And on another subject that was mentioned earlier tonight, there were no shortage of tragedies in our city this past week. A young girl was murdered in North Scranton, far too young, at the hands of the lowest of lowlifes. A multiple tragedy in West Side over the weekend. While we're still sorting that out, it seems another troubled person destroying lives around him. Then we had the senseless and seemingly constant fires in South Side, which appear to be the work of an arsonist. So my thoughts and prayers go out to all of the innocent victims of the tragedies in the past week. Through all of this, though, we've had one constant, that is a consistent reminder that we have a truly professional police and fire department in the city of Scranton. So, to them, thanks again for all that you do for us each and every day. And one final note, on a positive note I'm gonna try to end. In a recent survey conducted by the National Association of Realtors, six out of 10 people said they would spend more time to live in a, or spend more money to live in a community where they could walk to parks, shops, and restaurants. 80% thought that was important in deciding where they live. 86% thought it was important to have sidewalks and places to take walks, and 74% thought it was important to have a short commute to work. 54% even thought it was important to have bike lanes and paths nearby. All this information, if we pay attention to it, can lead to Scranton's future growth. All the data, all the democratic or demographic information points to us in that direction, and that's where we are trending. So we either embrace it, or we fall back. I just happen to embrace it, and will do everything I can to foster, nourish, and promote our current and future opportunities. So that's just more food for thought. So that's all I have tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahn, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, just a few. First of all, I think Mrs. Schumacher made a good point tonight about having a caucus with the Pennsylvania Economy League, Henry Amoroso, about the city's financial condition, and more importantly, our exit plan. I asked a few months ago for an update from the administration on the different items in the exit plan. I haven't received a response yet, but I do think that council really should make it a habit of inviting Pell to a caucus to get an update every year, because in, I think, 2020 or 2021, it's, we're either exiting from Act 47, or we're not. So there is a deadline there. So next week, I'll discuss it with my colleagues, but I'd like to make a motion... So, next week, I'll discuss it with my colleagues, but I'd like to make a motion that we officially invite them to a caucus before we take a recess for August. I also have asked for an update on the property on Wyoming Avenue for Mr. Young, and, you know, I know he is extremely anxious about it, and I, quite frankly, I would be too if there was a hole in my backyard that was swallowing it up and creeping closer to my house. And I would like that update in writing, because we've waited now, as somebody pointed out, for three years, and that's too long. I see stories all the time on the news about some subsidences opening up, and they're fixed immediately. This, I've said it once, I'll say it again, this is an emergency. And if it's an emergency for one person, it's an emergency for everybody, because if it was in your backyard, you would want it filled as well. So, again, I would like an update on that, and I hope that the city administration, the mayor's office, is moving as quickly as possible, because time is of the essence. It's also been brought up in the last few weeks about the mine void under Lackawanna College, one of the buildings in downtown Scranton. So, I did have the opportunity to reach out to John Poshus, our city engineer, just to get more information on that and whether an analysis would be a good idea to determine the extent to which the mine void projects have been successful and if the city indeed needs an analysis. So, I'm looking for more information from him there, and I'm supposed to touch base with him this Friday. So, I'll update everybody on that. Last July 2017, council passed legislation to enter into a contract with James Moran for the rental registration database program. I asked for an update from then-business administrator Bolzoni on November 1st of 2017 on that. He did give me a memo with some updates. I do have additional questions, being that it's been a few months now, so I am going to send something to the Licensing and Inspections Department to get an update specifically on whether or not a sticker program has been implemented. Also, when Mr. Moran was here last year, he talked about a tip line concept, so I would like to know if those things are being put in place. I had the opportunity to attend a plot neighborhood meeting this week, and there were several concerns that neighbors had, so I'm just going to check through those very quickly. One of the most important ones, at the intersection of Depot Street and Riverside Drive, there used to be a stop sign, a one-way sign, and a do not enter sign there, but for some reason they were removed. This is an extremely dangerous area, especially with the amount of children that ride their bikes there. It's extremely narrow and it's not meant to be for two cars, but in the last few months, there have been two cars that have been driving by, a lot of near misses there. So, if we could please send a letter or we'll get in contact with the DPW to get these signs back up immediately. This is supposed to be a one-way, and the neighbors are extremely concerned about that. Also, catch basins need to be cleaned throughout the plot. I'm assuming also throughout the city. I get complaints from residents on East Mountain. This is a major concern of residents in the plot due to flooding issues. Residents would like to know what the plan is for cleaning the basins this year, so if we could also ask DPW that question. Another concern, inlets are blocked at the floodgate. Residents would like to know what preventative maintenance is being done or has been done this year on the flood levees. The streetlights at the Gray Street Playground were not upgraded to LED, so there's a question on the status there. Also, a house sits in disrepair in the corner of Depot and Shawnee Avenue. Also, a lot of concern about dumping in the river, different materials being dumped in the river. So, one suggestion was if the police department could possibly put a camera on or near the levee that feeds into headquarters. There's also issues with graffiti that's on the wall there as well, so that was one of the recommendations from the neighbors. Also, if it's possible to put a sign up, this area is under surveillance. That seemed to work in other parts of the city in the past. And then, last item here, everybody's favorite, pave cuts. A gentleman that's part of the Neighborhood Association sent me a detailed list of some of the pave cuts throughout the plot with pictures. Some of the more egregious ones, Amelia Avenue between East Parker Street and Finn Street, the repair was poor, resulted in more bumps, and it created a whole new issue out there. Also, Shawnee Avenue in Salem Place, this was due to a water pipe replacement, but the repairs are being conducted with little to no regard to quality or longevity, as has been discussed here quite often. This repair in particular shows the unevenness of the larger patch and completely untouched at the top of the smaller patch. Also, residents in the neighborhood are compiling a list of faded street signs and stop signs that they would like replaced due to safety concerns, so when I get that, I will forward it to the DPW. On the issue of the nurses, as has been reported, the nurses went on strike April 25th, Wednesday, in front of the emergency room entrance at Moses Taylor Hospital, and they also held a candlelight vigil at Courthouse Square. And there was a gentleman here last week that was representing the nurses who spoke to city council. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make that because of a previous engagement, but I stand with the nurses in this city who, in my view, are being bullied by a major for-profit company who is more interested in their bottom line than the safety and health of their employees and their patients. I am really concerned that community health systems, which is a Tennessee-based parent company for the hospital, is profit and business-driven rather than patient and service-driven. Money-hungry corporate machines that pervert the medical profession by putting the bottom line before patient care is all too prevalent throughout the United States, and in my opinion, definitely in this case. They say that money and greed is the root of all evil, and I think in this case, that is abundantly clear. I want to read a letter from a doctor who wants to remain anonymous for obvious reasons. Actually, it was not a letter, it was a message that I received. And this ties into this whole issue of the nurses' strike. Back in December of 2017, Commonwealth Health ended the teaching relationship with the Geisinger Medical School. So, basically, all the students in the medical school had been doing residencies and rotations at Moses Taylor and Regional Hospital. Commonwealth Health put an end to that. They ended the relationship. So, the medical students can no longer step foot in their medical facilities for educational purposes. And I would like to take a second just to read what this doctor had sent to me. He said, "By denying medical students from the Geisinger Medical School the opportunity of rotating and learning within their facilities from willing faculty members and physicians, CHS leadership let the local future of medicine down in the only way that they possibly could. Disheartening is one word, irresponsible is another. Denying invaluable educational experiences from the members of this community who at some point may very well be taking care of these leaders could be considered shortsighted at the very best. It is a paradox which acutely hurt those who are actively trying to learn as much as possible for the sake of their future patients. That said, all was not lost in this decision to deny education. Our local leaders provided a very real and tangible lesson. At a certain point, cash is always king, and this principle holds true even in the context of medical education. It's unfortunate that this lesson was introduced so abruptly. This community deserves so much better." And I would agree with that. You know, usually, city council doesn't insert itself into a dispute between a company and its employees, but in this case, I think it's important because it's for the well-being and the health of all of the residents in Scranton and in Lackawanna County. I have been in touch with representatives from the Nurses Union, and they are sending me a draft letter that they would like signed by city council members, so I'll be introducing that next week, hopefully to voice our displeasure for what is going on here. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahn. Just a couple of brief items. First, Mr. Elman brought up last week about possible raw sewage behind the Parker Street Bridge flowing into the river, and he did give me a picture before the meeting. So, if we could send that along to the DPW just to check to see if this actually is a raw sewage or if it's stormwater runoff. So, that's a big distinction. So, we will have to, we will check into that for you. Mr. Bowles also brought up an issue that we'll discuss with Attorney Manora regarding pods becoming structures. That's something I think we need to look into, because they are, throughout the city, many businesses are using these type of pods or trailers for stores. So, it's something we need to look at, and the law needs to be applied equally on that. And finally, I think most of my colleagues mentioned this as well. Couple of weeks ago, my wife and I actually moved from one part of West Side to Kaiser Valley, Mayorfield Avenue, a couple of blocks away from Luzern Street. I woke up Saturday morning, dirty water, didn't think anything of it, assumed there was a water main break in the neighborhood. Sure enough, we find out it was because of the incident on Washburn Street with the fire department that was out there. I just want to commend our police, fire, our DPW for putting their lives on the line. It was a very dangerous situation. I know many of them were shot at. They did an amazing job, all of our public safety personnel. And I know I say it a lot, but we really do have the best police and fire protection in this city. And I know sometimes people criticize myself or others for being pro-police and fire, but they really are the most important departments in our city. I'd also like to thank directors from the Public Safety Department. I did see Chief Graziano, Chief De Sarno, Denny Gallagher, and of course, our mayor. I know, I did talk to Mayor Courtwright twice on Saturday. I know he was on scene for about eight hours. So, I want to thank all of them for their leadership during this terrible, terrible crisis, and that is all.
5B for introduction and ordinance establishing a no parking zone along the easterly side of Stafford Avenue, beginning approximately 45 feet north from its intersection with Willow Street and continuing 170 feet to allow for sight distance for a proposed driveway by Dale and Lisa Kramer for a property located at 623 Stafford Avenue.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 4, 2018, entitled "An Ordnance Amending File of the Council Number 17, 1994," entitled "An Ordnance As Amended Authorizing the Governing Body of the City of Scranton to Enact a Waste Disposal and Collection Fee for the Purpose of Raising Revenue to Cover the Waste Disposal and Collection Costs Incurred by the City of Scranton for the Disposal of Refuse by Imposing a Waste Disposal and Collection Fee of $300 for Calendar Year 2018, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter, to extend the May 1, 2018 discount date to May 31, 2018, to enable residents to take advantage of the 10 percent discount when paying their refuse bill in full."
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, if my colleagues are in agreement, I would like to pass this through in two readings, because we actually are already, next week will already be passed May 1st, just so that gets pushed through and put into law, so people can take advantage of that discount.
I would concur with that, and I think people really need to know, I mean, all this ordinance is doing is extending the discount period from May 1st to May 31st, because the bills haven't gotten out yet. My understanding is they're going out tomorrow. We've been told that over and over and over again, but I think this is the final time that it actually is going to happen, so. But that's all this legislation is doing, is not anything to do with the already in-place $300 fee.
And does anybody know why it's, they haven't gotten out on time?
I know in meetings that we've had with the administration, there were a number of issues with PNC, I know, on the billing side, so that's something when that contract comes up that, in my opinion, needs to be thoroughly reviewed. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file of the Council Number 13, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with West Granton Little League Incorporated for use of city-owned property for a three-year period commencing April 15, 2018, and ending April 14, 2021.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file of the Council Number 14, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with the Scranton School District for use of city-owned property as more fully described in the lease agreement attached to or to as Exhibit A, for a three-year period commencing April 15, 2018, and ending April 14, 2021.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, file of the Council Number 15, 2018, amending file of the Council Number 64, 2014, "An Ordnance As Amended," entitled "An Ordnance Adopting the Quality of Life and Violations Ticket Process in the City of Scranton," be amended to include a new definition in Section 2, definitions, new violations; in Section 3, quality of life violations, and new fines and penalties; in Section 9, fines and penalties.
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I make a motion to table item 7C for further discussion of the fees and quality of life program.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table item 7C. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
7D, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, file of the Council Number 9, 2018, amending file of the Council Number 12, 1996, as amended, entitled "The City of Scranton Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance to amend the approval process for lot line adjustments, annexations, and minor revisions of approved plans."
What is the recommendation for the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.